Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Ilaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk?
There are no appointments today under resolutions, job and family services bills?
No moved? Second discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved with the exception of number one of 26.
What was one?
$3,000 for computers.
Was that under the appropriations?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I question that one also, because I have a computer in my office, and they want computers for the new commissioners.
It was a request made by the incoming commissioners. Commissioner Moore doesn't have a computer in his office.
But this was plural. It had commissioners.
There was a request for an office PC and a laptop.
I had a laptop. I don't know where it went. I turned it in.
Yours will be reused by an incoming commissioner, but Commissioner Moore didn't have any of that equipment in his office available.
So are you talking one laptop and one computer?
I don't recall the... Do you have the...
It's two computers and one laptop.
Two PCs and one laptop?
Yes.
And I think that's because the IT director probably recommended an upgrade to your computer. I think he was four or five years old.
It's perfectly fine.
Okay, I'm just answering the question. I don't know as far as the suitability to the computer, but what was passed downstairs was to look at what their IT requests were and to pass up the appropriate request to buy the equipment, whatever the pleasure is.
Well, since it's not an emergency, I would make an exception, and then the two new commissioners can decide what they want to do, because I know mine is perfectly fine. Is that your second to this motion? Yes. Ms. Moore?
Mr. Moore? Sorry.
Uh-oh. You're in trouble, Trace.
You're in too good start. I remember that nun thing going on.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Advances or repayments?
So moved.
Second discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved with the exceptions of 2114 and 2115. That's pretty much the same thing we discussed in number three.
Second. Further discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Oh, I have another exception, too. But, all right, that's okay. I'll just vote on it. Sorry. Thinking out loud.
Okay.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye with the exception of the 2114, 2115, 2086, and 2087, which is Clemmons and Nelson's.
Ms. Blair?
I'll vote aye with no exceptions.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under the airport, authorize a reappointment at Dan Cross, the Lorraine County Airport Board. Said term is effective January 1st, 2005, expiring December 31st, 2008.
So moved.
Second discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you.
Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Second discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Approve the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes and weigh the reading of the same for August 19th and 26th, October 7th, 14th, 20th, 21st, 28th, and November 4th, 16th, and 18th, 2004.
So moved.
Second discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Award bid to Gordon Food Service for food items to be supplied to Golden Acres Nursing Home and Lorraine Medina Community-Based Correctional Facility for the period January 1st, 2005 through June 30th, 2005. Bids were opened on November 12th, and this was the most responsive bid complying with specifications. So moved. Second discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve change order number one to SM Fox Construction, Inc., Ilaria, Ohio, and the total credit amount of $2,370 for the interior alterations to Lorraine County Courthouse for adult probation. Change order will omit the removal of the carpet, suspend ceiling height, and omit floor drain, cleanout, and floor cutting and patching. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Nay.
Approve change order number one to Tresco Systems, Inc., Lima, Ohio, in the amount of $4,468 for additional work required on the exterior Lorraine County Courthouse. Change order will include resetting standstone at north elevation, upper southwest, southeast, and northeast corners of the building, and install plexiglass at north elevation round window and miscellaneous spot pointing. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Approve vital statistics fee payments to various health districts in accordance with ORC 3705.24 to be paid from accountant 001013201470101 fees. Lorraine County Health District will receive $625.20, Lorraine City $1,517.60, Ilaria City $1,210.40, and Erie County Health District $46.
So moved.
Second discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Approve an enter into agreement between Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and Maximus, Inc., Concord Township, Ohio, for the 2004 indirect cost allocation plan in the amount of $17,500. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Cancel an advance fund transfer action taken on December 2nd, 2004 by resolution number 04-849. Funds 11701 and 11702. Action will be resubmitted in January 2005. So moved. Second discussion.
What is this again? What funds were these?
Yes, I can answer that. This is just a housekeeping reservation. They didn't need the advance.
Was that what it was?
Good morning. Commissioner John Roca, I'm the Commissioners' Budget Director. There was a transfer put through last week on anticipation that funds would be available from the state on December 29th. We're not sure at this time whether the 29th transaction will happen. So I think to be on the safe side, it would be better to go back and repeal by this resolution that transaction, since this money may come in in January, and that would be too late. So this would just reverse an action on an anticipated advance from the state, which may not materialize in December.
Thank you.
Housekeeping.
Brown, Paul, and Driver, right? Okay.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Community Development Department, instruct the clerk to publish a combined notice in the nonlegal section of the local newspaper to fulfill the requirements on the environmental review record for, and this is going to be changed, it should be FY04 CDVG Formula Program, and delete the rest.
Both the rest?
Yes. Oh, and delete the rest? It's an old one. Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under job and family services, approve and enter into various childcare contracts with licensed childcare providers, effective January 1st, 2005 through December 31st, 2005. The maximum amount reimbursed for child enrolled in childcare center is based on state reimbursement ceilings, which are set for the age of the child and the amount the child attends the center. Authorize the Director of Job and Family to execute on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's approval as to form. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve an enter into new maintenance plan contract for the Windows version of the program expenditures tracking system for the calendar year 2005 at a cost of $1,900. This will be paid from account 205010903450101 Contract Services. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel within Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services to utilize the various credit card privileges for the year 2005. So moved. Second discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve an enter into agreement with Speedway Super American LLC of Eon, Ohio, for the purchase of prepaid fuel cards using Tana funds. Two proposals were received on November 22nd, and Speedway Super America LLC was the most responsive bid complying with specifications, and the value of said contract would not exceed $300,000.
So moved.
Second discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under the transit, authorize RLS and Associates, Inc., Dayton, Ohio, to implement Phase One service modifications for Lorraine County Transit. The recommendation for Tier One service modification to LCT fixed route bus service includes: weekday starting time for LCT routes should be changed from 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. Early trips will be eliminated on Routes 1, 2, 3, 21, 31, 41, 51, 52, and 53. Eliminate evening trips on Route 3. Eliminate Saturday service on Route 11. Eliminate Sunday service on Routes 31 and 51. And these changes are designed to result in the cost savings, but with minor impact in current riderships, and the cost savings will be $208,462. Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. I believe Shirley has a question. Shirley?
Yes, I wanted to ask this question last time when it didn't get seconded. Are hearings required or necessary before these routes changes are decided?
Mr. Cortez?
Yes, and waiting on this resolution of intent, we were holding off scheduling the meetings, and the meetings will be scheduled and will be publicized upon if we get a successful vote on this resolution.
Thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead. Madam Clerk? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Go ahead. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy? Want to hear it from?
Just vote.
Aye.
There we go.
Elizabeth?
Excuse me, but if this resolution is passed and then a meeting is held, are not these changes already then to be enforced? I'm not clear on that.
The changes cannot take place without the public hearings. The public hearings will be held prior to any changes, and information from the public hearing will be brought back to the Board. Should the Board decide at that time they wish to hold up on the implementation, they can do so, or they can proceed ahead.
Under Workforce Development Agency, approve an enter into contract with Workforce Institute of Lorraine County, Ilaria, Ohio, for the preparation of the five-year WEA strategic plan per Phase One under Title I of the Workforce Investment Act in the amount of $24,145.16. This contract is effective retroactive, should be effective December 9th, 2004 through February 28th, 2005. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Amend Resolution Number 03-347 adopted May 3rd, 2004, approving and entering to contract on behalf of WGA with the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for the sole purpose of formalizing ODJFS fiscal's responsibilities as outlined in the MOU by and between the parties in the employment network. Said amendment is to increase contract amount by $78.45 for a total value of $68,315.29. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Children's Services, authorize various additions and deletions of Lorraine County Children's Services employees to utilize the Shell Oil Gasoline Credit Card not to exceed 200, and the agency's MasterCard not to exceed 2,500 for the year 2004. Said use is just to purchase gas, oil, and emergency motor vehicle repair for the county-owned lease vehicles. So moved. Second discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the coroner, approve an enter into lease agreement between Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and Arthur H. Clark for office space utilized by Lorraine County Coroner, effective January 1st, 2005, expiring December 31st, 2008. The lease payments for the years 2005 and '06 will be $1,170 per month, and for 2007 and '08 will be $1,225 per month, and contains a 90-day ring cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Yes. Most people don't like to see the coroner show up, but I see he's in the back room.
Oh, I didn't realize you were serious.
I don't know if you have anything to say, doctor, or not?
No, not really.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Okay. Well, just nice to see you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under domestic relations, approve Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court to request funding in the amount of $56,500 from Ford Motor Company. This funding will provide for a full-time case worker to be utilized by the family education court program, and there is no local county match required. So moved. Second discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorize the creation of Fund 262 to be titled Success for Youth. Said fund is to capture activity related to the Bride Memorial of Success for Youth grant funding. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the engineer, certify the annual county highway system mileage in accordance with ORC Section 4501.04. The total certified mileage for January 3rd, December 2003 for Lorraine County was 270.29 miles. The miles for calendar year 2004 will be a total of 270.29 miles. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Except on behalf of Columbia Township Trustees, the improvement and release the maintenance guarantee for Meadow Ridge Subdivision, Columbia Township, Rich Baron is the developer. The plan of this subdivision is recorded in Lorraine County Record and Platus follows: Metal Trail with road number T284 is the only street and extends westerly from Columbia West River Road, County Road 60, 1,989.27 feet, or 0.377 miles length to cul-de-sac. So moved. Second discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Except on behalf of Columbia Township Trustees, the improvements and release the maintenance guarantee for Rolling Brook Subdivision, Columbia Township, Rich Baron is the developer. The plan of this subdivision is recorded in Lorraine County Record and Platus follows: Rolling Brook Lane with road number T285 extending northerly from Cracker Road, T8, a length of 2,501.00 feet, or 0.474 miles to cul-de-sac. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Except in generalized 2004 report on bridges for Lorraine County, there are 226 bridges ranging in span from 10 feet to 305 feet. Thirty-two are less than 22 feet wide, and 22 are trust bridges. Last year, Vermont Street Bridge south of Law Road and Crafton Eastern Road Bridge, east of State Route 83, and Dirkie Road Bridge south of Giles Road were completed. Projects for this year include Beard Road Bridge north of Bates Road will have old trussels removed and replaced with galvanized beams and new galvanized decking. Butments will be repaired to accept the new bridge structure. Emmens Road Bridge west of Mark's Road will have twin 72 inches culvert pipes removed and replaced with a pre-cast box culvert with an unrestricted opening of 6 by 12. Both projects will be resurfaced after structures are built. An OPWC request, 179,350. Total cost is 211,000. Gifford Road Bridge north of US 20 plans have been completed and will be submitted to OPWC in September 2005 for funding. Phase three of bridge guardrail ends. 200,000 estimate, 100% federal, is ready for submittal. Funding is not scheduled until fiscal year '07, but this project may be constructed this year if overrun runs are available. Attempting to replace large trust bridges that are now narrow and aging using OPWC funds whenever possible, and these are expensive and would not be affordable without the funding. Bridges are expected thoroughly once per year and expected monthly for any needed maintenance work. Also moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under the prosecutor treasure, except in generalized tree tech, which is the delinquent real estate tax collection appropriation and expenditure report estimated by Lorraine County Treasurer and Lorraine County Prosecutor pursuant to ORC 321.261 for the year 2004, the revenue generated for '04 was $488,863.33, and for 2005, the estimate of the anticipated revenue will be approximately $450,000. So moved. Second discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the recorder, authorize Lorraine County Auditor to continue special fund per Ohio Revise Code Section 317.09 and 317.321 for the increase in fees imposed by Lorraine County Recorder for the purpose of supplementing equipment needs of the county recorder on an annual basis effective January 1st, 2005, expiring December 31st, 2005. The $4 requested by the county auditor, $3 will be placed in Fund 218, which is the Recorder's Equipment Fund, and a dollar will be retained in the general fund for the employee's salary.
Wasn't this 2 on 2? I thought we had this at 2 on 2.
No, sir, it was discussed, and there's been various dialogue concerning the length and the split and so forth over the years, but it's been settled over the last few years at 3 in one. Sir, this is simply a mirror of last year's resolution, and the clerk looked it up.
Well, I saw that there's an extra $106,000 in the account this year, and with these numbers right here, there'll probably be an extra $220,000 excess account. So is there a way we can at least change it for one year to stay within the budget that she had submitted?
Obviously, the Board has the power to decide the split, and that's why it's here. I know that the Recorder's Office is working jointly with our IT department, our record center, making records available online for people to access that. They'll need equipment and imaging equipment and so forth. I don't have the cost of that, but I know that that's going to be the initiative over the next year, and we've had a meeting on that. So I just want to bring you to speed on some of the initiatives that we talked about, but it's up to the Board on that split, Commissioner.
I'll just help off that our IT department, that's all. That's how I see it.
The request was for five years, which is law by law, and we have continually done it on a one-year basis at our discretion.
That'd be support of $2 and $2.
What was your second figure? You said $106,000 extra this year. What are you estimating for?
Um, I'll get it out. It's $106,000, and the anticipation was 260,000. The total sources would be $368,000, and the appropriations usually around $260,000, $270,000. So... As I fear, there's an extra $100,000. If we need it, you can always just go back and they can request it, you know? So just starting to figure out a way to get some more money in the general fund.
Well, and if they have more money at the end of the year, it rolls back as well, so...
Well, you know, obviously the pleasure of the Board, but they, if you do a different split based upon their plans, they may need some future assistance if we get the online, you know, access going for the public and for the title people and so forth. It's an exciting project, and it'll provide for a better service in the community.
Right. I'll make a motion, just what you said, but change it from $2 and $2. How's that? See what happens. Dyes for like a second.
I guess so.
Okay. It seems to happen a lot lately.
Just once in a while.
I know, ma'am.
I've had some offers for seconds in the community in case I needed them.
Okay. Okay. Well, why don't you make a motion?
I'll move for approval of item number thirty-five as appears on the agenda.
I'll second that for you. How's that?
Thank you, David.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
I try.
Mr. Cortez, County Minister?
No comments reported this morning, thank you.
Mr. Ennis, County Prosecutor?
No report.
Commissioner's Report. Commissioner Vacy?
None here.
Can I hear more?
Yes. I don't see Avon News out here, but I see her assistant is. The seniors of Avon, it's called Senior, Avon Seniors, Inc., the city of Avon spent about a half a million dollars in a project center for them. They have about five hundred members, and about six months ago, there was a request with all of our old furniture. And they seem to feel like they're getting the runaround, so they gave me a call and wondered what was going on. If it's a matter of giving it to them, they said they'd be, well, they'd be happy to store it for them, for us, in their building, since it's sitting in our storage facility. So I didn't know if there's anything going on, Mr. Cortez, regarding that or not.
There is issues going on. I don't think they're getting the runaround. And one of the councilmen from Avon called late yesterday, and I have not had an opportunity to speak with him, because they're nearing the opening of their center very soon. They came in and were allowed to go through our warehouse before they should have been to look at what equipment was possibly going to be surplus. The, I say should have been because those things haven't been decided yet, they haven't been inventoried, they haven't been categorized, nor have they been offered out to the agencies and departments in accordance with our standard policy of going through county departments first and townships and so forth. And they tagged the choices, best furniture that was in there, and they want to take that. And I did not believe that we should move with huge expedience on that because there may be other needs around the General Fund and our agencies for some of that property first. And I'm waiting on an inventory and cataloging of that equipment so that we can send that list out to our departments, and I have not received that list yet.
My understanding is everybody wants new furniture. I don't think anybody's ever asked for old furniture. We've moved them around, but my understanding is the purchasing department's just sitting on it, waiting to do something.
I think that's a little bit inaccurate, Commissioner. I think that I'm waiting on a list, I have not seen a list, and we have not offered out this furniture to anybody else. They want new furniture, and it's going to be allowed for them to buy new furniture. They're grateful for new furniture. But some of the stuff that was left behind is in rather good condition and is still usable by some of the departments. It's the pleasure of the board, again, I'm just indicating to you why we haven't moved forward with that. They have not gotten the runaround. They were told this when they made their request. I was a little bit disturbed that they were allowed to go in and view all this before we had offered out the equipment to our own people first.
Who allowed them to do that?
It's public buildings. I'm sure it's not a crime to walk around and look at public assets.
I wasn't indicating, well, it may be a public building, but there are private spaces in public buildings.
I agree. This is our warehouse, isn't it?
It was, it was, it was an issue of confusion within our staff, and we take responsibility for that.
I was trying to get a hold of what the list was per tale. Do you have any idea how much they're looking for? How many desks?
I don't have the list, but I can see if I can get a hold of it.
I mean, is it something outrageous, like?
I know there's file cabinets and chairs.
Do you have the list? Okay. I think we'll talk about it next week. How's that?
I'd like to see a copy of the list, too.
The list that they're speaking to is the list of stuff they requested, not the list of stuff that we have.
Oh, do we have a list of what we have?
Not to my knowledge, I'm still waiting on.
Oh, if that's what you're working on?
Well, I hope it's being worked on, Commissioner, thank you.
The furniture that we do have, that usually we can't even give that stuff away because nobody wants to come and pick it up because it's so heavy, and that's why I thought we have an opportunity here to move some of the county assets to senior schools and at least want this stuff.
Well, we haven't even offered it out to our seniors. No, that's.
I'm talking about people that don't have anything right now, so.
Okay.
Okay, so you get the, give me the request for next week?
You have to work on it this week, right? So that everybody can have something used for Christmas.
I understand, it's right.
Thank you, Jim. Anything else?
Yes. I'd like to thank Mr. Rogacy's Budget Department for getting me the information I needed. Last year, as you all know, I voted no for the budget because I had it seven days ahead of time, and that was why I voted no. So this year, I've had a lot of time to look at it, and I want to confirm some of the numbers because I had, some of the people that work for me were crunching some of the numbers that John's given me, and I didn't run copies. Wish I would have run copies, and if anybody wants copies afterwards. I just want to confirm some of the information that I have here. I don't know if John's ready to talk about this or not, but I asked for a budget from nineteen ninety-three till two thousand and four, so we can at least project out for next week's budget discussion for oh five. So that's kind of why I asked for it. He gave me a fax paper that's got all my writing on it, so I want to kind of, I know. And what happened was there was a discrepancy in some numbers, and John came out to my office yesterday, and we went over that, and I crunched some new numbers in there, so I just want to make sure we're okay and we're on the same page, right?
Both numbers are accurate, it's just a different basis of accounting.
Yeah, because what we, what my discussion was, and he explained it to me, was with the graph that I have, it shows a lot of spike in spending, and I, but the Justice Center spending wasn't in there, right?
That's correct.
And your explanation was?
Certain inter-fund transfers and advances that are intra-county are eliminated for G A A P, generally accepted accounting principles statements, and the auditor's caffir has the generally accepted accounting principles statements, which is generally the bible of the numbers.
Right. Okay, so nineteen ninety-three, this, well, let me just do this, this Exhibit A that you gave me, Lorraine County Ohio General Fund Revenue by Source, the G A A P, that's correct.
G A A P, right.
The only thing that I had questions on, because we didn't have the numbers, and you're saying, well, you gave me the oh three numbers, correct? That was a fifty thousand, six eighty-one?
Oh three should be on that chart if that's the chart we talked about.
Yeah, I think it fell off on my fax copy.
Yeah.
And then the oh four, though, numbers, you say we won't have those real numbers until June of oh five, correct?
The audit, usually, the auditor can speak better to that, but normally, the audit is finished about June of the succeeding year for the prior year, so it'll be about June of five when that would be wrapped up approximately.
Because when we were talking about the budget last year, we're looking at expenditures of fifty-one million, and we passed it with revenues coming in at forty-eight seven. And then in June of oh four, is when they talked about the one point two million in additional revenue, correct? Does that, remember how this history went down?
I don't have that in front of me, Commissioner. I just have, as you had said, estimates at this point for two oh oh four.
Okay. But then you said in November, we have additional revenue now?
I don't, I don't have a specific number for November. What I do have, of course, is the actual monthly report showing the year-to-date November actual numbers, year, date for revenue and expenditures, and then in this process, we usually forecast what December revenues will be, and December revenues and December expenditures to come up to a total for the year.
Which are?
We're looking at about, again, these are strictly estimates, they could change, we're not done with the year.
Right.
We're looking for about fifty, approximately fifty-two million dollars in General Fund revenue and about forty-nine million dollars in General Fund expenditures.
Right, for this, for oh four?
For the two oh oh four period.
Okay. So you're looking at an additional roughly between two point eight and three million dollars additional?
Approximately.
Than what we voted on last year?
Right, approximately.
Okay. So what I did, it kind of messes up my graph here a little bit.
People always hedge a little bit.
Well.
But that's as an approximation without the year being through.
See, this makes it a little bit more prettier, so. Okay, well, we just want to get prepared for that.
Okay.
I want to make sure these are the numbers I'm going to be working on next week.
Yeah, those are audited numbers that you have from the auditors.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, taking a look at the history of the last, from ninety-three on, and taking a look at spending and the growth of the income coming in. I hate to say income, I should say taxes coming in, so. Okay, that's the only question I had on that issue.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
But John, while you're there, that two point eight million increase in revenue, what do you attribute that to?
The approximate pickup in revenue over the original expectations, Commissioner, were in the area of retail sales taxes has done somewhat better. Conveyance fees have done somewhat better, some have actually gone down. Local government, of course, is always a sore spot, that's gone down. We have investments, real estate, I think, tax revenue came up a little bit, but I think the areas primarily were conveyance fees and the retail sales tax.
You know, that retail sales tax, I was in Avon last night shopping, and even at the mall, if you look at the license plates, you'll see a lot of those people are not from Lorraine County that are shopping in Lorraine County. And I said from nineteen ninety-one that that was going to happen because our sales tax are lower than the majority of the counties, well, all the counties around us. So what I think we're working on is volume sales, because people are coming into Lorraine County shopping, and especially like the holidays, and for their major appliances for less taxes. And I think this is great, and I think if we can keep those taxes down, we're going to see more and more of that volume shopping. And what's going to happen, in my opinion, I think the United States is becoming a retail outlet for all the other countries, and instead of manufacturing businesses, we've got more retail sales, and that's where our jobs are. So if we can keep our sales tax down, we're going to find out that that's where we're going to keep our jobs. We're going to keep those, retain them, and increase those jobs because that's what's left.
Just the kibits, I, I hope that trend of sales tax increases continues, Commissioner, but I, I hear a lot about the Crocker Park opening up in Kiowa County, so hopefully, you know, that won't damage our position here.
Yeah, but still, their sales tax is higher than ours.
Yeah, there's more volume, true.
And people will travel for it.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Six months ago, another six-month issue with seniors, or not seniors, but the Lorraine County Historical Society requested a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for some capital improvements. Seeing that there's some extra money, I'd like to make a motion to support that.
A dollar moment again, please.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand. In a motion.
No second. I just, I'd like to, I'd like to pursue their request further. I think what they asked for was a basic amount for the house that they have just purchased on Washington Avenue, I think it was twenty-five thousand plus ten thousand. They asked for, for Marilyn Felchek Harley is doing a project for them, and ten thousand of that was for her, support for her, and I'm certainly in favor of those two amounts. And then they wanted to distribute monies to the various societies throughout the county. And I've had some discussion with various individuals who thought it might be a good idea, instead of the county commissioners allocating that money to them, and they in turn allocating it to the various societies, if we would establish a program, perhaps through our Community Development Department, wherein we allocate the monies to those various societies and eliminate the middleman. And I think that might be something for us to look at, and I'm certainly in favor of doing that. I have on my desk a request from Ohio, which is Oberlin, which is Oberlin's historical group, they're requesting significant dollars generally, and I don't know where they fit in the room of this request from the Lorraine County Historical Society. And also, the Lorraine Historical Society has contacted the Commissioner's Office, and they are in need of some dollars to put a roof on one of the buildings, and I don't even know if that is in the mix. I've not re-looked at this request recently, so if you would be amenable to a portion of this with some direction to look at the second phase of it, I would certainly support that.
Okay.
Okay.
How do you do the second phase? What are you defining second phase?
Well, I would give the basic thirty-five thousand that the Historical Society asked, the county Historical Society asked for themselves. I would agree to that, and then I would ask Mr. Dwinning to look at how we might implement a program through his department to assist historical societies, they call them, what do they call them?
Historical society.
No, they call them something else. They call them, well, maybe societies throughout the county for additional dollars.
I think that the Historical Society had a list of projects already that they thought were worthy of funding, and if you were to add to the resolution to pass the additional appropriation for the Community Development Department, and they could use that list as their first-year list for funding, too. I mean, this way, you wouldn't have to vet, you know, so many additional ideas, because that could take some time.
So what, do the ninety-five thousand or ninety thousand slip over and give it to the Community Development to pass out?
And I, I think possibly you could use some of those projects that they've already identified as a guide leading into establishing the program.
I'd support that.
Just a recommendation, trying to reach some kind of consensus, that's all.
So what are you saying to earmark ninety thousand, or how much were you talking about?
They were asking for a hundred and twenty-five thousand for capital improvements. Commissioner Blair is recommending, or was talking about, was putting a, having everything go through the Community Development, and then, and correct me if I'm wrong, basically have us dole out the capital improvement money instead of the Historical Society?
Yes.
But what's the bottom line? How much are we talking about now?
A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, Commissioner.
Total, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Personally, I've always felt that the county Historical Society should take over the courthouse, and I've said that, and I think it would be, I hope that somebody looks into it. But we're here now, so.
So how do you make a motion? How do you do that to?
To earmark a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and to place it into the?
Well, what you would do is authorize the thirty-five thousand dollars for two thousand and five for the Historical Society.
With the other ninety thousand for Mr. Dwinning to work with the society and to find out what other capital improvements, and in the future, the board would be deciding which ones.
Right, and that would be for two thousand and five appropriation, and.
You can figure out a way to put that in a motion.
Well, I think.
John, would you, excuse me. John, would you need a line item for that?
It would have to be designated, not necessarily a line item, but it would be a General Fund expenditure.
Designated for this purpose.
That would be extracted from the General Fund.
Okay.
From unappropriated money.
Did you get it?
General Fund, unappropriated.
I'll make the motion. I'm still trying to figure it out.
You have a motion, Teresa?
In so many of my words. To be honest. Thirty-five thousand dollars is going to the Lorraine County Historical Society for two thousand and five from the General Fund Unappropriated Funds, and the ninety thousand dollars, I'm assuming from the same amount of money, the General Fund Unappropriated Funds, will go to Lorraine County Community Development Department to implement the programs to assist the historical societies in their funding and their list of projects that were submitted.
I'll sum.
Sorry. Very good.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye. Thank you.
Not bad for a temporary clerk.
Acting. She's not temporary, there's a difference.
George has worked on the budget, is also trying to find out the history of the taxation of this county. Mr. Ennis, in reviewing in nineteen eighty-six, the sales tax that the Board of Commissioners passed, I don't think there was anybody here, I don't think you were here, that would know what happened. What I'm looking at is, as I'm reviewing this for the budget for next week, I need an opinion in regards to a sentence in this tax. I'm trying to find a copy for you, so you can read it. Do you have a copy of it, Teresa?
Oh, you have more than one?
Okay. I don't know if you can give me an opinion in a week or not, but I didn't find, I didn't find this out until I just got this before the meeting, so. So before we discuss budgets next week, I just want an opinion on the first sentence, where it says in eighty-six, the county commissioners by a resolution imposed a half percent tax on all retail sales made in the county, except sales on motor vehicles. Now, I just went with my brother to buy a truck, and I know that half percent was on there, and I know I've been buying it, but I was looking for an exclusion to see maybe it was for county vehicles or anything else, and I don't see it in here. I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you could, do you think you could have an answer in a day or two on something like this, or, or do you think?
I'll try to have one for next week.
Oh, okay, okay. And if any ramifications of that, because I think back in eighty-six, this was probably, this was an automobile town, a steel town, so I'm sure they might not have been earmarked. I could be wrong, but that's the only concern I had before we discussed the budget next week. So, that's it for today. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Moore. I have no report.
Old business?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
Just the decision on the proposed vacation of Deer Run Road in Eden Township.
Commissioner, I, I've spoke with some of the people, and I think they're here today. I don't know if they're, well, he was here. Oh, okay. Well, I think we were at a one-to-one vote last week.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, I was reading that one.
On the vacation of the property, Deer Run Road, you kind of missed out on some of that.
All right, okay.
There was a second, there was just no second reading on this.
Well, we didn't really make motions.
Yeah, we didn't, didn't we?
We just kind of, in informal discussion, commented where we thought we were. Jerry, I believe that the Prosecutor's Office was asked to review the proposal that was...
The emergency road proposal?
No, yes, I'm sorry. And did, do you have any comments on that?
Well, there were two questions that were conveyed to me. The first was, apparently, one of the trustees brought up an issue about, because this was a platted area, whether the commissioners could, in effect, take something that was deeded to the township away, and the vacation statutes do apply to platted subdivisions, so this is within the authority of the commissioners to do this. The second question came, and I believe there was a proposal to do some sort of partial vacation, but reserve this for access for emergency vehicles, is that the concept? I have not been able to locate anything that specifically authorizes a partial vacation. I have some concern as to where that would leave us and the trustees as far as their responsibilities. Would they be responsible to maintain the road? Who would have liabilities over this? I'm not sure what the sheriff's authority would be at that point, you know, if somebody started driving down this, if this is a remained road, how they would enforce that. So there are, there are a myriad of legal questions surrounding that proposal. I would recommend to the commissioners that if what they would like to do would be to see reserved access to that property would be to get a formal recorded easement back from whoever was, you know, go ahead and vacated, but get a condition that upon getting a formal easement back from, and I don't have the names of who these landowners this would be converting to, it goes to the adjacent landowners, but if we could get a specific easement back to the county for the use as road or access for ingress and egress for emergency vehicles, I think that would be legally more sound way to approach that, if that's the route the commissioners would go. But I think you would have to condition the vacating of the street by getting that easement within, you know, something like ninety days or even six months or something like that. You'd have to put some deadline on.
Jerry, even with an easement, it would be no different, and I would be concerned, too, if it's not hard pavement there, how could you get, say, a fire truck if the ground is muddy? I mean, I think they would have a problem getting in there, and with, like you said, with the sheriff and everything, I, I don't know. I think either do it or you don't, because even an easement, these people aren't going to really actually own. to really actually own that section, and if they do own it, do they pay taxes on it with an easement?
Yeah, pretty much.
And then if they want to build something on there, they can't anyway, so what's the difference? You might as well just leave it a road. I mean, a paper street like that. I don't know, that's, why do they want it vacated?
My position is vacation, compared to Blair's is for, against vacating, and we have several homeowners here who were here last week.
Why do they want this vacated? How do the township trustees feel about it? Can we hear from them? Or did you?
Commissioner, yeah, real quick, in summary, the trustees spoke in, not in support of vacating the roads, and the residents spoke in support of vacating the road.
But what's their purpose to want it vacated?
Well, if they vacate the road, it will end up being more or less a cul-de-sac where there'll be limited egress into the area for safety concerns of their families as they purported to here, and the township purported to some concerns on safety vehicles, safety forces going in there, and obviously expansion into the areas of other subdevelopments, and being able to interconnect those subdevelopments. I don't mean to be brief, but that's pretty much a summary, and, you know, pretty much the same thing we hear all the time.
And the argument was that when they developed the subdivision, it wasn't built for heavy traffic. There was no, and you guys are a lot more fluent than I am on this issue, I heard it last week, but the roads weren't wide enough, there's no sidewalks, they're more worried about a one-hundred-year tragedy, or disaster, than they are about maybe three kids getting killed, if they were connected to another subdivision in the back, and that's pretty much what the premise is. I'd rather hear from you, you know, I mean, it's up to you guys, but that's, so the residents don't want it, the township trustees want it, the engineer, I believe, supported it, Mr. Twain's department supported the not vacating it, and so the residents are asking us to vacate, so.
Did you want to speak? Yes, we'd be happy to hear from you, Mr. Dumbey, since you couldn't be here.
Good morning.
Good morning. The whole issue of whether to vacate or not is a very complicated one, I wrote all three of you a letter on it. The problem that all the safety services have is either they handle it with a knee-jerk reaction, which they've done, or they stand a chance of losing something that we worked very hard, I'm on the county planning commission, and I do have a conflict of interest in this, but we worked very hard in order to get these stub streets put in. But the problem with Flint Ridge in particular is that it's a unique piece of property, it's very near four-eighty, and what you're doing is you're taking a road which is Turkey Road, and you would then be making an access to it to fifty-seven, which people will then shortcut and run through in order to get to the interchange. The, to put in the extra traffic would impact the residents of a community that has existed since eighty-seven, and they're now worried about what-ifs, the what-ifs a hazardous spill were to happen at the entrance, what if a hurricane came through and knocked a tree down? I mean, we're country people, we'll pull a chainsaw out and we'll cut the tree up. And that's what the safety service people are saying, well, we're scared that you're going to have a hazardous spill there, and you won't be able to get in and out. Well, we're not really worried about it, what we're worried about is the daily incidences that will happen from the excess traffic. We've had numbers anywhere from up to four thousand vehicles that will be using Flint Ridge Road. Now, even if you were to take that in half, or even say a thousand more vehicles, that will impact on the residents.
How'd you get those figures?
John Hamilton, I believe, and one of the residents out there is a architect, and they worked them up, I believe that's where you got them.
Where did you say you got them, then, Bob?
Well, a lot of them were from John Hamilton, and what they're doing is they're trying to figure out the traffic that will run up eighty-two, that right now that uses eighty-two and uses Turkey Road, and the amount of vehicles that use fifty-seven.
That's if it opens up.
Excuse me?
You're talking if it opens up?
If it were to open up, we figure that we'll have about, they said as high as maybe four thousand vehicles. If, the other issue is if the density of Eaton Township should change to the east of Flint Ridge, that could even be in excess of that.
Four thousand, that would be, what, annually?
That would be daily, they're saying.
Or what are you talking, four thousand daily?
No, I whacked it back, if you read my letter, I whacked it back significantly, but as I said, even if I were to say a thousand vehicles a day, what about, because we don't have sidewalks, because we don't have the width of the road, right now, the people walk the road, they interact with each other because of that, the kids play in the road, and what we're trying to stop is a change in a community that is already there and is thriving, and that's actually what the planners tried to look with.
Is there someone talking about actually putting pavement down there and making that a street right now?
Well, we're trying...
What caused this?
There, what caused it was, we just started looking at it and decided it was the smart thing to do, was to shut the, you know, get the horses out of the barn before it burned down, because once that a developer comes in, it may be too late.
Yeah, but that's all developed out there, we went out and looked at it, seemed to me like it was all developed.
No, that vacated road goes out to a field, right?
Oh, you're talking about in the back?
Right.
Yeah.
What I'm more concerned...
And the traffic coming in.
Yeah.
And then taking the shortcut to four-eighty instead of taking...
My feeling is that, and it also goes further with, any time we vacate a property, is what are we doing to the community that exists right now? Are we going to damage a community that is thriving?
But then, on the other hand, you have the safety issue, too, because there's only one entrance in there, and it takes longer for the fire department where they're located now, it's my understanding, it's going to take them longer to come all the way around to four-eighty to get in there, rather than if...
Well, they wouldn't go down four-eighty, the fire department is up eighty-two, actually it would be maybe one minute more for the fire department to try to come down and around, and they probably wouldn't even go that way anyways, depending upon where the fire would be within Flint Ridge. Well, we're talking very small numbers of changing what a fire department, a fire truck would take in order to get there. What we're really trying to do is we're saying, we don't feel as the residents that it is a health risk to us, and it did pass the subdivision review in the county planning commission years back as a safe, healthy community back then, and what I'm basically have said in my letter is, if it was safe back then, then if you were to take the positive and the negative attributes of putting it in, and the things that we would be losing, the negatives far outweigh the positives of being able to get a fire truck in in case a hazardous spill were to happen in the front entrance, which you and I both know, we could live here a thousand years, and that probably will never happen, and if it did, trust me, we'll find a way to get out of there. If it were an emergency, there's no road now, none of us feel that we have a health hazard going on. That's why all the residents are against this, because it will change, even if it were a hundred cars more a day, it would change our way of life that's out there right now. And if you, again, as I said, if you were to weigh the positives, the only positive is somebody from outside the community will be able to go through there as a shortcut, and sure, we'll be able to get another entrance in and out, but then take the negatives, increased traffic, maybe increased risk for theft, and what other issues would be, because there is limited police protection out there.
You know, you talk about theft out, though. You've got beautiful homes in Avon, okay, and I understand where you're coming from, people are going through Flint Ridge just being curious to see the beautiful homes and think, you know, the people in this area are wealthy, okay, and that's where you're coming in with theft, but you go to Avon, you have the same thing. You've got beautiful homes, you've got people coming in from Cuyahoga County, people would think, okay, these are wealthy people that buy these huge homes, so you're going to have the same issue there, and they've got a street going right in front of their house, too. So, I mean, theft, I would knock that out myself, because you're going to have that anyplace.
Well, where the theft comes in is that, right now with a one-way entrance in, the neighbors can watch who are coming and going, and trust me, they do. Right now, we feel comfortable, we wave to each other as we come and we go, and we can see who it is, and if a vehicle were to come in and back up and start unloading into a, you know, they would start unloading equipment and stuff into a van, you know, the neighbors out there know each other, because they talk, they walk with each other, and they're going to call the police, and the police have, can close it off so they can't get out. Once you put two entrances in and you're on top of a highway, that's what a burglar wants, they want to be able to get in and out. And again, I'm not saying, that's just one issue that I put on it, but if you start adding it up about loss of the street, that the neighbors can't walk around, loss of community that will start happening, these things start adding up, and then if you say, okay, what is the one or two good things, and what are all the negative things, it weighs against having a road put in, and that's where I come from. I just try to make, turn it into a black and white issue, and trying to figure out what it is that you're doing. But right now, everybody has handled it like, oh, we can't do that, because we're going to create a precedent for the future, and any other stub street that we've, on the planning commission, have tried to force in, everybody's going to get them to drop. I'm not saying that. I'm saying each one, each community needs to be reviewed.
Oh, we've had several of them that we've looked at, and we go out and, you know, we view them, and then make our decisions based on what we see and what we hear, and the safety issues.
That's my concern, is the safety more than anything else. I know how kids are, you can tell them not to play in the street, they're going to play in the street, so, last thing I'm going to do is support anything that's going to increase the traffic flow out there, so.
Thank you very much.
That's why I support vacating it, just for that reason only, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
So I support vacating it as a motion.
Mr. Commissioner Moore has made a motion to vacate the street. Trustee Walker would like to make a comment.
Well, it's a die.
Born?
It's a die.
So far.
Okay, so it dies, then, then no, then that issue now is dead, because that's what they're requesting to vacation. So, my recommendation after listening to some of the residents is, there was a place in which they could work out a way to put an emergency street in that's safe, and I think everybody agreed, that was my understanding, both parties, everybody all around thought, agreed to something like that. Well, I'm just trying to help you guys speed this thing up now, how's it, what's the next process then for them to do that, if they want to put in an emergency road, where they put a sub, I think the idea is to put some gravel down for support, put some grass in, and if it happens, it happens. I don't think it will happen, but, you know...
Jerry wasn't here last week, I forgot that. One of the, one of the issues that was raised, and Commissioner Vacy was also unavailable, one of the issues that was raised was possibly grading down, laying in a base suitable for heavy equipment to pass over, such as a fire truck or safety or rescue vehicles, and then covering that over with a few inches of topsoil, and then letting it grow as a grassy area. So, you would be able to still drive on it, because the vehicles wouldn't sink, but just a little bit into the topping, and that would lead, possibly could alleviate some of the concerns out there in the township.
Well, the citizens were supportive, if we could not vacate the property, they'd like to get that moving, and I'd like to know what's it going to take for them to get that moving.
I think it takes a cooperative effort between the township and the residents there, and then to bring that forward as a completed project, and then at that point, acts for easements.
Well, it's my understanding, when there's a paper street like that, if the township is petitioned to put the street in, then they have to bring that petition to the engineer, and the engineer has to put that street in. Am I correct?
Yeah, the bottom, I think the bottom line here is, this vacation, this vacation died, then they got to start over. Is that the premise of it all?
Yes, sir.
Simplified version?
Yes, sir, and I think that they need to start with the trustees on that alternative plan.
Okay.
To put a, for lack of a better term, a dirt road, but underneath the topsoil would be a base suitable enough to carry a heavy vehicle, and they could bring that kind of design back through the process, through the trustees, through the engineer.
There is a new portion of the vacation statute, which allows township trustees to declare a road to be unmaintained status, so that statute might be something that would be applicable to this situation.
And what does that do, Jerry?
That alleviates, the townships can, you know, if you're talking about doing this thing, the problem you have is when you have a road and it becomes established and open, then the township trustees, and the same applies to county roads, have certain mandatory obligations to keep a certain standard with respect to that road. There is a new statute that took effect this year where townships and counties, but with respect to township roads, the trustees could declare that that road still exists, but put it on unmaintained status so that they don't have to worry about having to maintain it and keep it up to the normal road standards, so that might be...
Can they actually do that? Like, if there was an accident there or something, then couldn't somebody come back and sue them, say that, you know?
Well, that's why the statute is there, and this might be a situation we could look into where they don't have to maintain it, so that it's not going to be appropriate for normal public traffic, but they...
Oh, okay.
They can have it accessible for the emergency vehicles, that might be an avenue that we can look into.
Thank you, Jerry. Yes, sir?
May I say something? My name is Richard Mongello, I'm a resident of Flint Ridge. We were talking at one time of putting in a emergency road only when that property's developed to the east of us, which would solve, you know, many problems, the traffic through there, and also providing emergency access. Now, I did talk to the engineer and planning director about emergency roads. There is a paver out that you can install, that grass will grow on it, and you still have a road for emergency vehicles, very simple, and it would solve two problems here, if that were permitted.
I think you have to start with the trustees first, so.
Even the, even the paver issue would start back with the trustees. I've seen those pavers, they use them a lot in the urbanized areas and parking lots and so forth, but they still have to lay a base in for them.
Yes, they do.
But you're right, they do look very nice when the grass comes up through them.
Right.
You have a meadowing effect. One of the issues that would have to be overcome, though, is once you put that in there, people are going to want to, want to drive over it, so that would have to be all worked out, too.
Well, I don't think you put in a whole twenty-four-foot width.
Right, just enough for a safety vehicle.
Just for fourteen feet.
Well, my only concern was that you have, you guys have a good momentum going here, I just don't want you to stop, just, I just want to make sure you guys know which way you're going next, and good luck.
All right.
Thank you.
And Ernie, you had a question and or comment?
Ernie Walker, Eaton Township trustee. Our concern from the very beginning, going all the way back to the time this development was, phase three was put in, and at that time, the fire chief was very concerned about having another access to the area. As far as these pavers, they are around Southwest General Hospital, so it didn't get fire trucks all the way around it, and it's like a block on a base, and the grass grows up between the block, and, but, and as, and number one, we are required to, eighteen feet is a normal street that the Ohio Revised Code requires for townships to put in. This is a twenty-two-foot street. I would, there's a curve in this paper street, I would not want to see something that was not readily available, that the fire truck driver could see, I certainly wouldn't want to go down to fourteen feet wide and try to put a fire truck making a turn going through there, because they're overloaded to begin with, all fire trucks are designed to be overloaded. That was, is just something that I think you'd be asking for a disaster, because you'd probably run off the edge of it, and who's going to plow it? We plow the streets in the wintertime, how are you going to run across a grass that has no indication of where the road is with a fire truck? And this is all on the, you know, we've heard figures, Mr. Mongello gave figures last week of a number of traffic going through there, and I went and checked with the engineers, I can't find any time that a survey was done. I don't know where he got these figures from, and as far as the two residents that live on either side of them, I think one of them is an... is an architect and the other one is a development engineer, and they bought that property knowing that street was there. And they knew it was a street that would eventually be probably developed. I personally think that the whole thing can be controlled by, uh, stop signs in if another's development is put into the east of them, and if that development has a street going through, and as I said last week, two of the people that are, who want this to be vacated, sit on the planning commission. So, whenever a developer comes in with a plan that has a street coming into this stub street, you know, they do have the authority there to object to it during planning. And it's, there's no, nothing that says that there's ever going to be a development here, number one. The traffic flowing north on Durkey Road, anybody with, that's wanting to get somewhere, would go down Butternut Ridge onto 480, or they would go north on, uh, Durkey Road to Chestnut Ridge to go to Elyria. Know what? I can't imagine anybody winding their way through a development that we could put more stop signs into. I, but I definitely don't want a street that's going to be unsafe for a fire truck to travel on, and it's not going, you're not gonna be able to use in the wintertime. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Madam Clerk, would you continue?
New business?
I have none.
Number one, the only thing that's- Tuesday, December 14th, 2004, 5:00 PM, in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room, Lorain County Transit will hold a public hearing on the changing its age requirement to purchase half fare tickets and/or passes from age 60 to 65 in order to confirm with ODOT. Two, on December 16th at 8:30, Lorain County Economic Industrial Development Corporation will have their annual meeting in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room, and this will be the official last meeting of the Board of Commissioners for 2005.
Don't you mean four?
Excuse me?
Don't you mean, oh, four? This will be the last official?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I, you just did away with a whole year, and I didn't wanna check that. I thought I was paying attention.
[laughing].
Ah, yeah.
The board correspondents?
I move the reading to be waived.
Sorry.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Public comment?
Shirley?
Um, some of, Shirley R. Johnson Oberlin. Some of us congratulated Mr. Innes this morning on his, uh, most recent state award as Prosecutor of the Year, which is apparently unusual for a civil case prosecutor to be so, uh, awarded, and we think it should be noted for the record here.
And thank you, Shirley, for bringing that to our attention. This is the second time this year that Jerry has been, um, honored. The Alliance honored him with the first annual Mike Whitmore Award, and I guess that that just shows you how good we were because the county prosecutor, the State Prosecutor's Association just affirmed what we said in the first place. So, congratulations, Shirley.
Congratulations.
It's, it's a well-deserved honor. We're pleased to have you represent-
He knows we'll still be watching him.
Well, just to keep him humble. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Phil?
Yes, I wanted to, uh, Phil Bellaski, the Carl Recorder's Office. I wanted to redress the, uh, earlier issue, if we could, concerning the money set aside for the Recorder's Office.
The past.
Past. What was the, uh-
Three to one.
Three, one?
Yeah.
Oh, and then somebody come and say it was two, two.
You can't. Yeah, that's okay.
No, baby.
The commissioners, the commissioners took care of you. Mr. Cortez was just sitting in his chair.
Thank you.
This is how this, you know, county runs on rumors.
You're welcome. Doesn't take long for bad news to travel in this building.
Nah, you heard Dave Warren ran up. What's he doing to my money?
The stairs will never be the same. Anybody else wants to talk to the board this morning?
I even seconded it, Phil.
Yes, you did.
Yeah. So, I can't believe everything you hear.
Having said that, I move you adjourned.
Sorry.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
We've all heard the gruesome statistics concerning child abuse. Maybe you've dismissed them and convinced yourself there's nothing you can do to help. Truth is, you can help. Voices for Children can make you an advocate to a child in Lorain County who desperately needs your help. Make the time to make a difference. Call Voices for Children today and find out how you can become part of the solution in speaking up for an abused child. We need your help.
Grass clippings, food scraps, garden remains, leaves, all have one thing in common. They can all be composted. All these things will go back to nature, using only air and water. Nature will recycle these and numerous other items back into rich soil to benefit your garden or shrubs. Turn it on the ground or tumble it in special drums. Composting saves landfill space and can save you money. Composting can turn into a fun project for the entire family.
Unsightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash." Litter lowers property values and it's costly to clean up.
Keep Lorain County beautiful. Put the lid on trash.
Well, I want to thank you on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners this morning for being here. Sun shining, we've got a beautiful day. It's, uh, an honor to have you here today. The opening benediction will be presented by Chaplain Bill Davis. Would you please stand and remain standing for the presentation of the flags presented by Southview ROTC, and then it will be followed by the National Anthem presented by Admiral King High School.
Thank you. Our Heavenly Father, first of all, thank you for this beautiful day, and make us truly grateful of these Medal of Honor recipients and the goodly charities thou hast bestowed upon this nation because of their unselfish acts. They have helped make this a great nation and the world a better place. Watch over our leaders, our people, and our nation, and keep us ever mindful of the sacrifices made for us by our fallen comrades, and make us worthy of your loving kindness, and may this ceremony bring them the recognition they deserve. And please remember all our service men and women everywhere in the world, and remember all the MIAs and POWs from all wars and conflicts. Amen.
Forward, march! Forward, march! Right, face! Forward, march!
Thank you. I don't know about you, but the National Anthem always gives me goosebumps. Please be seated. Today, we have gathered to honor those who have received the America Medal of Honor, but we, we must also recognize the honor, recognize and honor all of the courageous men and women in the past, present, and future that have and will continue to fight for our freedom and the principles for which America stands. At this time, we would like to unveil the, the plaque, but I would like to take one moment to thank Ken Cromer of Lorain Library for making it possible for us to display the authentic Medal of Honor given posthumously to Charles Berry, which is right here, and the picture of Charles is also right near it. But I would also like to ask the family members and relatives of all that we are honoring today to come up and assist us in the unveiling.
Good morning, everybody. As everyone's coming up here, I want at least to recognize the people that did drive here. We have somebody that actually, um, came from, uh, as far away as Minnesota from, um, regarding the Berry family. Richard Berry's here, Robert Berry is here, Maurice Graham and his son Matthew from Marion, Ohio. Janine Rockus and her husband Dan is here from Avon Lake. It was Lee Pritchett and his wife is here from Deerwood, Minnesota. Jean Jozinski is here from Vermilion. And, um, the Berrys that were here are from Ambrose, Ohio, and from Vermilion, Ohio. And that is the, the Berrys, uh, first cousins is what I was talking to them earlier today about. Uh, they're, most of them are all first cousins, and I'm honored to have you here. Now, not to leave anyone out, uh, I, I'm a big family tree buff, and I know a lot of people have family trees. If there's anybody else, you know, this is the ones that we could find. Is there anybody else here that is a member of any of the Medal of Honor recipients? Is there, there's two people in the band? Two boys in the band that, uh, if you'd like to come on up, you are, uh, to help participate in the unveiling of the plaque, uh, we, we'd be honored to have you up here. Is, if there's anybody else regarding, uh, any other members, because this is, this is the family that we could contact to help, uh, participate. Okay, if not, then we will proceed to the unveiling. Thank you. What a great day. Um, usually these events always, somehow we get rain, but today we were very fortunate. Uh, thank you all for attending. Um, I'd like to thank a few people that made this possible. Um, as you keep hearing Sandy's name, she's kind of trying to hide in the back. She really did a good job putting this together, and she had a lot of help. Janice Mokos, Joyce Parks, Teresa Upton, Marilyn Tracy, Jennifer Demage, and Dave Karpinski, and the maintenance staff, um, were all instrumental in bringing this thing together. Uh, I think, I think it was a very, a very good event. I think the plaque is, it's very beautiful, and it's gonna be proud to be, uh, here at, uh, in Lorain County. Um, let's see what we got here. Also, Commissioner Blair could not make it. Her grandson had a benediction today, and she, uh, she participated in that event at the same time, at 10 o'clock this morning. So, uh, she sends her regards. But to move along, John Polger is here, the commander of the VFW 1079, to give recognition of each military branch individually. So, I'd like to introduce, uh, John Polger.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Uh, we're gonna recognize each military branch individually, and the music will be played by the Admiral King High School Band and the Irish Heritage Pipe Band. And when we play our theme song, would you, would the members of that branch please stand up? First, the United States Air Force, the theme song performed by the Admiral King Band. Now, my favorite branch, the United States Navy, theme song performed by the Admiral King Band.
Thank you.
There's a few people here, but I want to at least recognize a few of our elected officials that are here today that are also veterans. I see Sheriff Tommey is over here, Judge Wurman, Judge Bozinski, and Judge Galavas and Judge Zalaski, some of our elected officials that are also veterans. With us today, we're going to have a few speakers and I'll be introducing them one by one. This next person happens to be, was a personal close friend of Charles Berry and his name is Joe Magazine, World War II veteran. If you want to have a few words, I'll just hand it over to you. I'll say it.
Oh, excuse me, I'm not the best speaker in the world. Appreciate everybody coming up for the remembrance of these fellows who are real heroes in the United States. I hate to say this, but I don't mean ballplayer to be heroes. All the young fellows know that the ballplayers, but they don't know all congressional managers. And we're going to turn that around in a big hurry.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. And as you told me, you were a friend of Charles, right? You were a friend of Charles Berry? Yes, you were. And with all the family here, if you'd like to come up and talk to Joe, I'd be happy to do so.
Chuck Berry, he was a great Marine. And he was a thunderbolt. And he was a big influence on all the area.
Thank you, Jeff. Next to speak, Walt Mortes here, a Korean War veteran. Walt?
The Medal of Honor is the highest award for bravery. Above and beyond the call of duty, it can be given to any person serving in the military of the United States of America. The Medal of Honor was signed into law by President Abraham Lincoln on December 21st, 1861. Since it was first awarded in 1863, 3,410 individuals have been awarded this medal. We are gathered here today to honor five veteran, rags of bravery, rags of bravery carried them above and beyond the call of duty. These recipients of the Medal of Honor from Lorraine County served in the following wars, the Civil War, Indian campaigns, Mexican campaigns, and World War II. Every generation has its own heroes. Today our young men and women are engaged, they have another contract. For the first time in history, we have experienced a radical war attack against innocent civilians on our shores by foreign power. These young men and women are fighting to protect our rights of freedom so that you have the right to choose, to speak out and express your own opinion for or against the public policies of our country. In closing, I would like to pay a few paragraphs to tell a story of how I feel and how you should feel. It's in a song. "I'm proud to be an American, or at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, because there ain't no doubt end of this land. God bless the USA and God bless our military wherever they may be. And God bless America."
Next, I'd like to introduce Don Adie, Vietnam War veteran.
Thank you. I was going to write down a few little things, but I want to do the best that I just speak from here. First of all, I'd like to thank our county commissioner's office for inviting me here today. It truly is an honor to be here today and pay tribute to our Medal of Honor recipients. As myself, being a Vietnam vet, I served in Vietnam 1970 to 71. I worked the 101st, escaped from the 524th furor master company in Camry Bay. Where I dealt with petroleum, where we offloaded ships in the bay, pumped to the tank farm, from the tank farm to tankers and that, and then distributed the fuel throughout Vietnam. I consider myself truly blessed to come back home here to the world as what we called it when we were there in Vietnam, because we truly were in another world. But to come back here, it was truly a blessing. Since then, I've put my heart and ab towards our veterans here throughout the county. And also, I hold the position of public relations and fundraising chairman for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Committee. Which here to my right, Sandy from the county commissioner's office asked me to bring in our scale and model here of a memorial that we're currently underway with. To honor the 98 Vietnam veterans who died from Lorraine County, that they're never forgotten or their families and what they have done. And once again, I'd like to express my thanks for being here today, to be part of this. It truly is an honor. And with that, I'll close. If you've got freedom, thank the vet.
Next, I'd like to introduce Steve Lawson, the Gulf War veteran. Steve?
Good morning. I'd like to thank the county commissioners and their staff for inviting me to speak at this ceremony honoring our local Medal of Honor recipients. It is an honor for me to be here representing the Desert Storm or the Persian Gulf veterans. Do we have any more up in the audience today? Who's growing anywhere? I thought it'd be important to provide a brief background regarding the Medal of Honor. A little bit of that was previously mentioned. Everyone's heard about the Medal of Honor, but most of us don't really know too much about it. As was mentioned, the Medal of Honor is the highest military honor in the United States of America. It is awarded by the President of the United States on behalf of Congress, so it is often referred to as the Congressional Medal of Honor. The criteria has changed since its inception, but basically today it is awarded for distinguished, gallant, and atrepid service at the risk of life, above and beyond the call of duty in conflict with an opposing force. Out of the millions of United States Armed Forces veterans and the numerous conflicts that they have served in, only 3,435 Medals of Honor have been awarded to 3,416 recipients. 319 of which were from Ohio, and only one has been awarded to a woman. Recipients of the Medal of Honor and their families are afforded special pensions, courtesies, and privileges. The Medal of Honor was created due to the Civil War in December of 1861 and was made a permanent decoration in 1863. Unfortunately, a lot of Medals of Honor awarded posthumously and there are only approximately 150 living recipients at this time. In my 23 years of service in the United States Army, I had the pleasure of personally meeting two recipients of the Medal of Honor. And a humbling that these heroes are the standard everyday citizens in America serving their country who did the honorable thing at the honorable time. Thank you.
Also invited today, from the Iraqi war, we invited the family of Sergeant, Sergeant Torrey's family. I don't know if they attend, if they're here. We did invite them and Sandy was, okay, I guess they could not make it today. Then next, I'd like to introduce our soloist, Lisa Myers.
There you go.
Thank you.
You know, this morning has really and truly been a day of remembrance and a tear day, a tear jerking day with the bands, the song, all our vets that are here and those that have passed on. And the memory of all these people, it's just too hard to keep the tears back. And I can't tell you how much we all appreciate our servicemen and women. You know, more than a century ago, once of the, one of the earliest recipients of the Medal of Honor, the Civil War hero, General Joshua Chamberlain, returned to Gettysburg and spoke at the dedication of a monument of his soldiers. He said, "The inspiration of a noble cause involving human interests far and wide enables men to do things they did not dream themselves capable of before." Today, at this grand memorial to Americans of singular courage and character, we gather with hearts that are indeed brightened to their limit. We gather to express the fullness of our gratitude to America's greatest heroes who were not blind to fears, but rather strong enough to see through them, who reached deep within to achieve what even they may have considered impossible. Destiny has carved a signature of their lives into this stone. I dare say that no one will be able to witness the force of this memorial without being moved to the very center of their souls. America is eternally in debt to the families and friends of all servicemen and women who stood and continue to stand behind each of these heroes. It is never too late for us, individually and collectively, to say we recognize your loss, we respect your sacrifice, but the greatest honor we can pay to those who have fought for America is to rededicate ourselves to the principles for which America stands to ensure that those who suffered or died shall not have done it in vain. With that, I want to thank you once again for being here and God be with you. Would you please stand for a moment of silence and retirement of the flags?
A Brookside High School student, Will Emery, will be playing tabs.
At this time, the VFW Honor Guard, Sergeant's memorial post 1079 will fire a salute. South URO2C will now retire the flag.
Please stay standing for the closing benediction which will be given by Brian Del Torco. Thank you.
With our hearts in prayer. Father God, we want to acknowledge you, we want to honor you to stay, we thank you for this beautiful day, this beautiful ceremony, and for these Medal of Honor, these sitnights and the family members that we honor today. God, we first honor you, we acknowledge you, and we honor that ultimate veteran, your son, Jesus Christ, who became the honor and courage and fought for our freedom. Lord, we acknowledge you, we honor you, we thank you that you are the God of our fathers, you are the God of Washington, the God of James Madison, the God of Thomas Jefferson. We thank you for this beautiful country that we live in with freedom, with great privilege. We thank you for the sovereign purpose that is upon our nation, the destiny and calling that is upon America, to extend justice and freedom throughout the world. Lord, we lift up our nation- Lord, we lift up our nation to you today during this season of trial, and we pray for our services around the world today, in the Middle East and around the world, as they uphold our freedom, as they continue to guard the liberties that we enjoy and fight for other nations as well. Father, we lift up these servicemen who've honored before you, and we pray that you would strengthen them, Father, with your courage, with your purpose, with a sense of destiny and calling that extends beyond their own lives. We thank you for them, Father, we honor them today. Father, we thank you for these Medal recipients, Lord, we honor them, we honor their families. They would be proud of new generations which are arising, fighting with courage and purpose. And I pray, Father, that you would continue to rest your hand upon our country, that we would continue to fulfill our purpose and our destiny as a nation. We thank you for our county, God, we lift up Lorraine County before you. And we pray, God, that your purpose and that your will will be done in our county. We lift up our commissioners before you, all of our leaders. We pray that you would strengthen them and give them your wisdom as they lead in our county. Father, bless everybody who's here today, every student, every family member, every person, every individual who's here today. We pray that our own lives, our own families, that we have your touch upon it, God. We thank you for it, Lord, we give you glory. And everybody sit. Amen.
Thank you. You know, as many of you know, my husband passed away about a year ago, but he was also a serviceman. And you know, to all our service people and their relatives and family and friends, I could just say this. When they had that casket draped with the flag, and the VFW from North Ridgeville had the gun salute, and we had a band, it was just the most touching thing, and it was like, "America, this is what it's all about." And to you people, I know how you feel, I understand your feelings. And may God bless each and every one of you, and once again, thank you for being here, and keep your hearts and minds open to America. That's what it's all about. Our freedom counts. Thanks again.